Ding Felder.
Here.
Gudes.
Here.
Maniscalco.
Here.
Citro.
Here.
Miranda.
Here.
Carlson.
Here.
And Vera.
Here. Okay, we move now to ceremonial activities. Councilman Citro.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Evan, would you like to join me? I'm worried. I'm not going to embarrass you too much. Mr. Chairman, council members. This is a very, very proud day for me. I don't know if the Elmo is up on the screen, if we can have this here. I would greatly appreciate it.
Oh, wow.
Mr. Wilson here. How old are you?
I'm sixteen.
Mr. Wilson has only known me for sixteen years, but I've known him all his life. I gave him his first haircut, as you can see, and he has made me very, very proud to know him. He's an accomplished musician, and academically, he is a star, but we're not here for that today. He has accomplished something that very, very, very few people accomplish, let alone Scouts, and I am very, very proud of him attaining the Eagle Scout. If I may, I'd like to read the commendation, and I left my glasses up there. In recognition of your outstanding achievement of obtaining the rank of Eagle Scout and in appreciation of your dedication. Thank you. Now I can read it much better. Ah, yes. The dedication. The commitment to your family, your community, we are proud of you. Your effort to replace the roof structure on the picnic pavilion of Lake Rogers Park is commended. That pavilion was beyond repair after Hurricane Irma, but to your determination was made whole again. You now join the long list of famous Eagle Scouts. President Gerald Ford, who was our thirty-eighth President of the United States, William C. DeRares, M.D., who transplanted the first artificial heart, uh, artificial heart, excuse me, and of course, the famous Steven Spielberg, who directed movies. Two famous astronauts. James Lovell, who flew the mission of Gemini Seven, Gemini Twelve, Apollo Eight, and Apollo Thirteen. Not to mention another famous astronaut that we've all been hearing about for the last two weeks, Neil Armstrong, who was the first man to step on the moon. Tampa City Council hereby commends you on the occasion of this Court of Honor ceremony and wishes you all the best in your future. I've known you many, many years. I'm proud of you. Would you like to tell us your story of how you got this?
Sure. I started in Scouts in the third grade. I started a little late. I had to catch up to get to the current rank that I was, and I basically just went up the ranks very casually, and I started Boy Scouts not really knowing a lot about Eagle Scout. In fact, I'm pretty sure I didn't know what Eagle Scout really was until about halfway through about second or third year, and that's when I really started gunning for Eagle Scout. And it was a very long process with planning the project of building the pavilion and just getting all the paperwork done and in order and all the dates. It was a big thing.
Council members, do you have any questions or comments?
Councilman Maniscalco. I had the pleasure of meeting you about thirty minutes ago. Congratulations. This is, you know, a big, big deal. You've worked very hard for this, and I know your mother's very proud, as she was here with your first haircut. Councilman Citro, is this at the location on Hymes?
Uh, yes, it is.
You cut my hair in this seat twenty years ago. I was fifteen years, fifteen years old, so we have shared tradition here. And I looked at this, I remember, young Joe, and I remember, yeah, yeah, so I was, I was in that same chair.
Did you sit on your mother's lap?
No. But she did, but she did drive me there before I got my driver's license, so.
See the great things that my haircuts can do?
Yeah, see? You go from the chair to Eagle Scout or City Council, you know, it's great, so you get the blessing. Congratulations. Anyone else?
Can we get a quick picture?
And I, and I just wanted, oh, and.
Go, no, go ahead. You're Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to say congratulations on that. You're a music guy. What kind of music you into?
Um, I really want to play in a rock band. That'd be awesome.
Do you have a favorite band or musician or?
It would be Metallica.
Okay, good. That's a thoughtful one. No, I mean it. That's, that's, I, I, that's old school. It's, you know, that's, that's good. That's great. And what are you, what are you going to do after, after high school?
I'm not too sure. The Navy is a big thing I'm looking into right now, so.
Great. Good for you. Well, congratulations. That's a really big deal. I mean that. And that's why we, we give commendations for Eagle Scouts, because it really is a big deal, and that's a, took a lot of hard work, and it shows a lot of achievement and character on your hand and, and support from your family, so congratulations.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Congratulations. My father is an Eagle Scout. He's eighty-nine. He's one of the oldest Eagle Scouts around. We're very proud of him and you. What was your favorite badge, looking back?
Um, I enjoyed several merit badges that I had. The shooting sports one, which was shotgun and rifle shooting, that was a lot of fun. I completed the cycling merit badge recently. That was very challenging. We had a ride for twenty-two miles. We did the mountain biking version, so it was a little less hard, but it had its own, it had its own set of challenges, so.
Very cool. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Ride the lightning.
I hope I didn't embarrass you too much.
Wasn't that bad.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, yes.
And Council.
Okay. Next, we move onward to our six o'clock public hearings. May I have a motion to open one or two?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Miranda, a second by Councilman Maniscalco. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now we move onward to item number two. Oh, yes, thank you, Duane. For everyone who is going to be testifying here or speaking here today, please stand up, raise your right hand, prepare to be sworn in.
Good evening, Chairman, Council. LaShawn Dogg, Planning, Design, and Development Coordination. Council, the first item on this evening's agenda is AB two nineteen fifteen. This is for the property located at three thousand eight West Gandy Boulevard. This applicant is being represented by Mark Bentley. The property is owned CG Commercial General and RS seventy-five Residential Single Family. This request before you is for a small venue for beer, wine, liquor consumption on premises only. The proposed use is private recreational facility. So there is a structure that is currently on the property. This is the Moose Lodge that is on Gandy, and I'll show you that picture in just a moment. They are proposing with this request seven thousand four hundred and ninety-nine square feet of indoor area, two hundred and twenty-two square feet of outdoor area, for a total AB sales area of seven thousand seven hundred and twenty-one square feet. They are currently approved for six thousand square feet of indoor area only, so they're adding that additional outdoor area. There are required thirty-eight parking spaces, and they are providing thirty-six spaces. They'll, the sales hours are consistent with Chapter fourteen. And also, Council, you'll find the staff findings for Planning, Design, and Development Coordination. There was a finding of inconsistent, and that is relating to the waivers that are requested, and that is to the distance separation. There are three waivers requested on the site plan. One is for the distance separation for residential uses from two hundred and fifty feet to thirty-one feet, and the other is for the reduction of distance separation to other AB establishments, and that is from two hundred and fifty feet to a hundred and thirty-three feet. The third waiver that is requested is a reduction of the required parking spaces from thirty-eight to thirty-six, which is a five percent reduction, so you'll find transportation planning. Their finding of inconsistent also within the staff report, and that's due to that waiver. There are minor corrections to be made on the site plan between first and second reading. One is to relabel the outdoor AB sales area space, and then the second revision requested is to add the R-ten, which is the future lane use designation, in the site data table. TPD had no objections. We received no opposition to this request. On page three of the staff report, Council, you'll find the code references for your consideration. Section twenty-seven dash forty-three would contain the definitions for the small venue and the recreational facility. And also, section twenty-seven dash one twenty-nine, the general standards, are also within that section. Also, on page five of the report, you'll find section twenty-seven dash one thirty-two, which is your regulations for your special uses. And I have an aerial of the site. So to orient you, this should look a little familiar to you. This is Gandy Boulevard. Not long ago, I was before you presenting the rezoning for this property that's here across the street on Gandy, but this is Gandy. This is South MacDill Avenue. This is the property that's located here in the dashed red line. So you see that we have the commercial general zoning predominantly along Gandy Boulevard. This is the site on Gandy. This is looking direct, if you're on Gandy, looking directly at the site. This is another view of the site. That area there is the outdoor area that is added for the AB sales request. That's another view of the subject site, gives you a closer view and on the side. That is the west property, the property to the west, which is the commercial use there, the vehicle repair. And that is the property to the east. That's a view on Gandy Boulevard, looking west. This is across Gandy Boulevard. That is the Mobile Home Park. That is the view if you're looking east on Gandy. And this is another view of the subject site. This is a view of the site plan that was submitted. So this is Gandy Boulevard, to orient you on the site plan. This is entry into the site. The parking is located here. So this is the building itself. So the grade area is the indoor area for the AB sales, and then this is the outdoor area, the two hundred and twenty-two square feet. And Council, the DRC staff has reviewed the application, finds it inconsistent with applicable City of Tampa Land Development Regulations, and that is due to the minor site revisions required between first and second reading. And I'm available if you have any questions?
Any questions from Council? Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of Council. My name is Mark Bentley, four oh one East Jackson Street, Tampa, three three six oh two. I'm proud to represent the Moose Lodge Gandy. Actually, the formal name is Loyal Order of Moose Interbay Lodge Number nine twelve. Who's the applicant? Marty, I have some documents I'm going to go over on the Elmo I'd like to have received and filed.
Did they make you an honorary member, Mark, for helping them?
Thank you.
I've been waiting for the offer, but it. Hasn't been forthcoming. I did get an offer from the VFW, though.
There you go.
The Marine thing, yeah, but. So the Moose Lodge was established forty-five years ago, and I'm accompanied here tonight by several members and officers and directors of the Moose Lodge, and in the event Council had any specific questions concerning their mission or their operations. Moose is a nonprofit organization. Its primary mission is to support two major charities, along with providing community service, and these charities would be Moose Heart Child City and School, located in Chicago, and this effort supports indigent children in all aspects, including housing in a home-like environment and education. Second charity is located in Orange County. It's called Moose Haven, which takes care of senior citizens in all respects. So I mentioned, was established in nineteen seventy-four, and was wet zone for COP in nineteen seventy-eight, and actually, it's signed by then-chairman Charlie Miranda. The request is to allow consumption on a nine-by-twenty-two patio on the east side of the property to allow smokers to drink in this small area, which is essentially the size of a typical living room. I'd like to show you a couple of pictures. They call an outdoor area, but to the extent it's outdoor, it's just screened. Doesn't have windows, but it's actually part of the building. I'd just like to go over, orient you. LaShawn did a good job, but. Get this off. So here's the subject property. There's a new auto repair place here, and here's Walgreens, and here's a vet clinic Here's the ordinance from seventy-eight for four COP. And here's the site plan LaShawn showed you. And this small area here is what's at issue tonight. And I want to point out to you, the twenty-eight percent of the Moose's property here, I've highlighted in yellow, that's zone residential, that they don't, it's not associated with the use of their property, and it provides a natural buffer to the residential properties to the rear. Here's a close-up of the patio that triggered the, the process here. And it was permitted. It's obviously completely constructed. And here's a view of the parking lot looking toward Gandy. And here's a view looking north past the parking lot to the residential property I just described, and then there's residential on the other side of the wall. So what typically happens when you have a, try and retrofit an old, old property like this, because it was built in seventy-four, and here we are forty-five years or so later on, and now, when you apply for an AB, you're subject to the new codes that are then in existence. So for example, this has triggered three waivers, and interestingly, two of the three are, are because of the new construction that occurred after Moose was constructed. Specifically, there's a two hundred and fifty-foot separation to other AB uses, so we're seeking a reduction from two fifty to one thirty-three from the Walgreens located at the southeast corner of MacDill and Gandy. Now, what's interesting there, ironic, is Walgreens had to obtain a waiver from City Council from the Moose Lodge when it went in there. So now, kind of the shoes on the other foot, I guess you could say. So clearly, adding a small porch to the east side of the Moose Lodge that already has a four COP would justify and support the waiver, as Moose was here first, and this wouldn't create an over-concentration of ABs in the area, because it's already wet zone. Waiver number two is request to reduce the required two hundred and fifty-foot separation to residential property to thirty-one feet. This property is located at the southwest of the Moose property, and note that the house on, that we're dealing with here, three oh oh nine West Marlin, the orientation is off Marlin Street, and this house was built in nineteen eighty-six, twelve years after Moose. So they kind of came in and caused the need for the separation, and there's really no problem. These guys have been there forty-five years. They've established that they're compatible and they're a good neighbor, but in any event, I thought it was important to point that out. And here again, the porch expansion is located on the east side of the property, away from the neighbors. Waiver number three, under the new code, required thirty-eight parking spaces. When Moose has thirty-six, when I interviewed my clients, they said they don't ever need thirty-six, let alone thirty-eight. They say occasionally they'll have a special event, and the event that occurs, what they would do is they park on the rear part of their property that's zone residential, or their neighbors allow them to park, say, the, the vet clinic located to the east. So parking's really never an issue, and we're talking about a de minimis reduction from thirty-eight to thirty-six spaces. So in summary, the Lodge has had a four COP for forty-one years at this point, and has obviously demonstrated compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood. They simply want the right to consume alcohol in a very minor porch area facing away from the residential neighborhood. So we would respectfully request your approval. If you have any questions, I'll attempt to answer.
Any questions, Council?
Mr. Chair, I just have one, one question, actually, two. Is there amplified music out in this little patio area?
No, there's not.
Was there any plans to put it out there?
No.
The hundred and thirty-three-foot request that you have, where's the nearest AB sales?
Walgreens.
Walgreens, okay. Excellent. Thank you. That's it, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Ding Felder.
Just a question to our legal counsel. I used to be an Elk, who I have a conflict to vote against the Moose.
I'm not qualified to answer that question.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone here from the public here to comment on item number two? If so, please come forward three minutes at a time.
Move to close.
Second.
Motion to close, by Councilman Ding Felder, second by Councilman Maniscalco. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilman Miranda, were you going to say something, sir?
No, I wasn't. I was thinking about nineteen seventy-eight.
Oh, go ahead.
And it seemed like it was yesterday.
Yeah.
I, okay, Councilman Ding Felder, are you comfortable reading item number one, sir?
Sure.
Okay. I'll move an ordinance, AB two dash nineteen dash fifteen, for first reading approval. An ordinance approving a special use permit, S-two, alcoholic beverage sales, small venue consumption on premises only, and making lawful the sale of beverages regardless of alcoholic content, beer, wine, and liquor on that certain lot, plot, or tract of land located at three thousand eight West Gandy Boulevard, Tampa, Florida, as more particularly described in section three, providing that all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict are repealed. Repealing ordinance eighty-seven, eight seven nine nine dash A, provide an effective date. And more specifically, I'll point out that the petitioner has met its burden to provide competent substantial evidence that the special use as conditioned and shown on the site plan presented meets the general standards of section twenty-seven dash one twenty-nine of the City of Tampa Code, specifically that the, the request is compatible with contiguous and surrounding property, most importantly, that the wet zoning has been on the premises for decades for six thousand square feet, so they're adding a little bit more and a little bit of outdoor use, with no objection, and also that the three waivers requested also meet the, they provided evidence that, that those waivers will not be hindering the surrounding properties. Yes, Mr. Chairman?
And just that the changes between first and second reading as directed by staff.
Correct.
Thank you.
And I'll incorporate that comment into my motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Ding Felder, a second by Councilman Maniscalco. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion carried unanimously. Second reading and adoption to be held on August twenty-second, two thousand nineteen, at nine thirty a.m.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
And, and my hats off to all the Moose folks here. Y'all are a great, what we call, I guess, old-school organization, kind of like the, the Knights of Columbus, that, that we, we need to continue to have more of, and y'all do great work in the community, the Shriners groups like that, and, you know, not enough people my age and Councilman Maniscalco's age joining, but we.
It can be done.
Man, I'm too busy, man. I'm a busy man. I'm a busy man, but other people, but, but, but God bless y'all for the work you do. I mean that. Thank you.
You're all welcome. Come by, have a good night. Come on by.
Thank you, guys. Okay, we move onward to item number three.
Chairman, Council, LaShawn Dogg, Planning, Design, and Development Coordination. Council, item number three is AB two nineteen sixteen. This is for the property located at twenty-three fifty-three East Fowler Avenue. This is for units seven and eight. The property is currently zoned Commercial General and Commercial Intensive. The request before you this evening is for a bar lounge. This is with beer, wine, liquor, and consumption on premises only. The AB sales area proposed is indoor only. There's no outdoor area. Proposed is six thousand eight hundred and twenty square feet of indoor area. There are three hundred parking spaces required, and two hundred and eighty-two spaces are provided, and the sales hours are consistent with Chapter fourteen. Also, you'll find under staff findings with Planning, Design, and Development Coordination, there's a finding of inconsistent. It is for the waivers requested. There are three waivers requested. Two of them are a reduction in the required distance separation. One is from residential uses from a thousand feet to a hundred and sixty-one feet. The other waiver requested is to other AB sales establishments from a thousand feet to zero feet. And the last waiver is twenty-seven dash two eighty-three point seven, and that's a reduction in the required parking spaces from three hundred to two hundred and eighty-two spaces, which is a six percent reduction, and that's where you'll find transportation plannings, comments of inconsistent finding due to that waiver requested. There's one correction required between first and second reading that we're requesting of the applicant, and it's a minor request on the site plan itself. We need to amend the waiver code sections that are listed. They should be waivers to twenty-seven dash one thirty-two, and that's our, that's on the two distance separation waivers.
Thank you.
And also, within the report, you'll find on page three, the code reference in sections, section twenty-seven dash forty-three, which is the definitions. Section twenty-seven dash one twenty-nine is your general standards. And then also, within the report, on page five, you'll find twenty-seven dash one thirty-two, which is the regulations regarding special uses. And this is an aerial of the site. So this is Fowler Avenue, to orient you on the map. This is Twenty-Second Street. This is University Square Mall here to the north, and this is the property that's identified here in red, in the dotted line. And so the site is within this vicinity, within this shopping center. Can I have pictures of the site? So this is the site, which is in units seven and eight. Currently, there are no, there's no alcoholic beverage sales permit on the property, so this will be the first permit on the property. This is another view of the subject site. This is the southeast view of the site, and that's another view southeast of the parking area, the other side of that strip. That's the subject property parking area. Another view of the area. This is the view looking east on Fowler, and this is the view if you're looking west on Fowler. This is the property that's to the east, and then this is a view of the property that is west, located to the west. And Council, this is the site plan that was submitted. This is Fowler Avenue that's located here. North is north on the plan. This is the parking for the area, and this is that strip center, and this is the subject site that's here, and their request is for indoor area only. And the DRC staff review, the request finds it inconsistent with applicable City of Tampa Land Development Regulations, and that is due to the modifications between first and second reading required on the site plan. And I'm available if you have any questions?
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions, Councilman Gudes and Councilman Ding Felder?
Not familiar with that area. That's that plaza. What is in that building now?
So currently, in the building, there are several, there are quite a few commercial uses in that building now, and that's, that's such a small print, I can put, try to fold this up. And put it up for you. So Champs is on the corner end, and Saigon Bay, you have a jewelry store that's in a small suite. Dollar General is adjacent to it. So on either side of the subject site, you have Dollar General, and then on the other side, you have the AT&amp;T store. And then you have Jimmy John's is there, Foot Action, then it's Bacon, and then there's a hair salon there. there's a hair salon there. And then there's a, this is a restaurant, this is Bacon, and this is Am Scott on the other end.
Is Saigon Bay a restaurant, too? Or is it?
It is.
It is a restaurant?
It is.
Councilman Dingfelter, thank you. Ms. Doc, will you pick the very first aerial that you had? Will you pick that up? And this is sort of a, just a technical question.
Okay.
The one with the red dash lines?
Yep. So, is there any concern that we've got a red dash line that shows the entire strip plaza? And it says, let's see, what does it say? Property location. I know up in the corner, it says unit seven and eight in print, but is there any concern that in our file, we would have a, the red dash is there to show the entire strip plaza?
Yes, I see what you're stating, because the suite itself is not highlighted on the building.
Yeah. It just concerns me to stick it in a file, and ten years later, somebody says, oh, we, you know, we, the whole, the whole strip plaza is.
Where is it in this strip? Absolutely. Well, what we do is on the actual application, it lists the unit numbers, and on the site plan itself, it actually highlights the areas that are included, the units within the suite. And then in addition to that, along with the application, the applicant is required to provide a legal survey. And that's an alcohol legal survey. And it shows the exact alcohol boundary. So, it'll take them.
Of the unit seven and eight?
Yes, it will take them directly to that suite.
Okay.
So, yes, we should have, I apologize, we should have corrected that on the map and showed.
Sounds like you got it covered. Thank you.
Okay.
Anything further? Thank you, ma'am. Applicant?
Hello, good evening. My name's Alyssa Martinez. I'm here tonight as the applicant on this application as a partner in M-two-A-two L L C. As you heard, our application is for beer, wine, liquor consumption on premises only at twenty-three-fifty-three East Fowler Avenue, suites seven and eight. So, I'd like to request, to address the waivers we are requesting with our application. The first is regarding distance separation from other A B establishments. There are two other A B establishments within the plaza, which is why it's indicated as a zero-feet separation waiver. The first establishment is the Jai Ho Royale Indian Cuisine. It's a restaurant, and they serve beer and wine only. The second is Saigon Bay, which is another restaurant. They also serve beer and wine only. And both of those are restaurants. They primarily sell the alcohol as an accompaniment to the food that they sell. Our second waiver is the distance separation to residential uses. The nearest residential property is to the south of the shopping plaza, and I'd like to show something on here. So, the shopping plaza mainly orients to the, to the north, and this residential use is towards the south. It's R M twenty-four, it's an apartment complex. So, I brought some photos. There is a significant buffer between the shopping plaza and this R M twenty-four use. The first is a large section of ditch and trees. Oh, these are a little large. You can kind of see it there. This is another section. You can see there's, there's an active water ditch as well as a fence. And then after the ditch is the, see, it's an active railway track. And then this is once you get across the railroad tracks in the actual apartment complex. You can see that the first primary use is about, I would say, twenty feet of parking. And then if you're standing in the parking lot looking, you can't see the shopping plaza. And the only door that is adjacent to the property where the unit is, is an emergency exit in the back. So, the actual door to enter the proposed use of bars in the front of the property. Our final waiver is the reduction on property. Per the various uses of the plaza, we're required to have three-hundred parking spaces, and we only have two-hundred-and-eighty-two, which is a parking waiver of only six percent. Our hours of operation will be towards the latter part of the day, so we don't really see much of a conflict in the, in having not enough adequate parking. We also anticipate that a lot of our patients will utilize a ride-sharing service. So, we certainly don't think that we're going to have any parking conflicts. I'd also like to reiterate that T P D did review our application. It didn't have any objections to it. And on a personal note, my husband and I are both third-generation Tampa natives, so we always look for opportunities that we can bring to Tampa to contribute to our community. And I am available for any questions.
Any questions from council? Just out of curiosity, this will have no bearing on my vote, what kind of, is it going to be, what, a bar, a theme bar, a restaurant?
Yeah, so, kind of like a local watering hole. We're on the track to name it Ivy and kind of have like a plant theme.
Okay, great. Just out of curiosity.
Mr. Chair, if I may. First, you can't get past the rear parking lot. You can't get past the fence. You can't get past the moat. Is there any entrances in the back of this plaza?
No, there are not. In order to exit that apartment complex, you actually have to go on Twenty-Second Street and then go to Fowler to enter the plaza. The fence, and then the, the shopping plaza is actually raised from that ditch. And that, that is an active railway, so, no.
Okay, so, there is no egress or anything to the back of it?
No, there's not.
You'd actually have to drive in the entrance and drive all the way around?
Correct.
Thank you.
Anything further? Thank you, ma'am. Anyone here to publicly comment on item number three? If so, please come forward at this time for three minutes.
Move to close.
A motion to close by Councilman Maniscalco, I believe a second by Councilman Goodes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilman Goodes, do you, sir, mind taking item number three?
Chairman, file number A B two-dash-nineteen-dash-sixteen. Only been presented for first reading consideration. Only approving a special-use permit S two for alcoholic beverage sales, bar-sized lounge consumption on premises only, and making lawful the sale of beverages regardless of alcohol content, beer, wine, and liquor on that certain lot, plot, or tract of land located at twenty-three-fifty-three East Fowler Avenue, unit seven and eight, Tampa, Florida, as more particularly described in section two, providing that all ordinances or parts of the ordinance in conflict are repealed, providing an effective date.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Goodes, a second by Councilman Miranda. Yes, sir, Mr. Shelby?
Just for, I'm sorry, did you want, Ms. Doc, did you want to mention about the changes? Or did you want to go in further? I'm sorry.
Yes, if you could mention the site plan revision, the minor site plan revision between first and second reading.
With the minor setback provision to first and second reading.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Motion carried. Motion carried with Dingfelter abstinent vote. Second reading and adoption to be held on August twenty-second, two thousand and nineteen at nine-thirty a.m.
Okay, next we go to motions, closing thoughts, et cetera. We are finished at six-thirty-eight. That's awesome. Councilman Carlson?
Two things, two things real fast. Since we can't talk about any of this outside of these, this room. Councilman Maniscalco, you have asked staff to look at naming a street after President Obama. I was in Waterworks Park today and wondered if you would consider, or if it's possible even, to try to name a park after him instead. Waterworks Park is begging for a name, and if not him, maybe somebody else in the future. So, just a thought for you to consider.
I think that's in response to, I think that's honorable because it's a place where families gather. It's a busy place. It's a well-recognized place. It's along the Riverwalk. It's in the middle of everything that's going on between Armature Works and Ulay Lee all the way down. So, it's not something that would be, you know, hidden away or forgotten about. It's something, you know, like we say courtesy all the time. We would say that park's name all the time. So, it would make sense. I mean, that's something that certainly.
Just a thought for you. It was your motion, so you do what you want.
Yes, it's something to consider, sure.
The second thing, many of you know former councilman, councilmember Linda Solcena, who on behalf of Athena has, has been pushing for the ratification of the Equal Rights Amendment in the state of Florida. As you all may know, the E R A that I remember from the seventies still has the possibility to be ratified. Apparently, only one state needs to ratify it, and Athena and other women's groups are pushing hard to try to get the Florida Legislature to, to approve it. And if we did, then Florida would be the state that pushed it over the top. Former councilmember Solcena gave me a draft that another city has used, and I won't ask you all to vote on this tonight, but I just wanted to pass that out. Maybe you all could give one to Marty. And then, and then if we, maybe we could make a motion to put it on the agenda for next time, just to, just to see if we want to edit it and pass it.
So, are you doing, I guess, requesting a resolution on the E R A?
Yeah, so, it's a proposal, it's a proposal for a resolution. Unless you quickly read it and want to vote on it tonight, I would make a motion that we schedule it for review on our next meeting. So, this will be a resolution we would send to the state legislature and the, and the governor.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, sir.
It, I would like to be able to have the opportunity to have it formatted and put it in the proper form for council and bring it back. If council were inclined to vote, I would ask that it be put on for the next regular meeting's agenda. If that's council's inclination.
Is that okay, sir?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion by councilman, and sir, were you wanting to?
I was just going to mention a bill that, it puts me in a tough position, because if I voted no, I couldn't have anywhere to go home tonight.
Well, and I remember this, this was thought to be passed in, what, up until, I guess, in the seventies, in the nineteen-eighties, I guess it failed, right? With the moral majority and all.
Yeah, there's, there's a history in this resolution. That you all can read, and then Linda can give us more on it as well. But apparently, it's, Congress can give us the right to allow an additional state to vote on it, so.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilman Carlson, a second by Councilman Goodes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anything else, sir?
Yep.
Okay, councilman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to present accommodation to Ms. Vicky Potier for her years of public service to our community.
Second.
Vicky is retiring after twenty years with the Bay Shore Guard Neighborhood Association. I would like to make that presentation on Thursday, September the fifth, the year two thousand and nineteen.
We have a motion by Councilman Miranda, a second by Councilman Dingfelter. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anything else, sir?
That's it, sir.
Councilman Citro?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to thank all the councilmembers and you, Mr. Chair, for indulging me in, in giving the accommodation to a well-deserved Eagle Scout and a very close and personal friend of mine. And thank you, Councilman Miranda, for asking for the change of date while I was absent last week. Nothing else from me.
Thank you, sir.
I can say one thing personally, I see that the two individuals.
You gave the first haircut, do still have hair.
You see what I did to you?
Evidently, I didn't sit in your chair.
Lucky, lucky. Councilman Maniscalco?
And on that note, I'm going to wash my hair tonight.
Weekly, right?
Celebration.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to make a motion to give accommodation to Ms. Lena Young-Green, longtime Tampa Heights community activist for her tremendous work in the community. I present this accommodation on the August twenty-second, two thousand and nineteen.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Goodes, a second by Councilman Miranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anything else, sir?
Yes, sir. I would like to make a motion to give Tampa Parks and Recreation employees Victoria Maddie, Ashley St. Clair, and Sophie Simberg accommodation for rescuing a teen who was swept by a current in the Hillsborough River while attempting to swim across it. I present this accommodation on eight-twenty-nine, two thousand and nineteen.
We have a motion by Councilman Goodes, a second by Councilman Citro. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Yes, that's fine.
All right, Mr. Chairman. I would like to make a motion to give accommodation to the Tampa Bay Black Nurses Association for their contributions to the community, to the Tampa community, in a form of providing educational services and preventive care to underserved communities. I present this accommodation on, to them on Thursday, August twenty-nine, two thousand and nineteen.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Goodes, a second by Councilman Maniscalco. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And just to make sure, August twenty-ninth, are we doing, is that firefighter, is that? Okay, so, we're going to have a, and then, okay, that's fine, just, I guess, just for packed agenda's sake. That's right. Councilman Dingfelter?
Nothing, sir.